If I can have your attention, I'd like to call the meeting ordered for Friday, March 1st. Francis Marion Board of Trustees, roll call, Ms. Jacobs, please.
Mr. Bowles.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Dr. Nauter.
Here.
Mr. Elmer.
Here.
Ms. Avery.
Here.
Mr. Irvin. Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Gunn.
Here.
Mrs. Hartong.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Senator Leatherman. Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. McIntyre.
Here.
Mr. Norwood.
Here.
Dr. R. Kelly. Mrs. Richardson.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Thank you. Everybody should have an opportunity to review the minutes. Any changes in addition to the minutes?
Move they be approved, second?
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, minutes are approved. Moving to committee reports. Executive Affairs met this morning at 8:30, and I think it was just the consensus that from now on, we would meet at 8:30 because of a number of topics we've discussed. We talked about a number of topics this morning, a variety of topics, however, no action was taken. Some of those will be covered in the President's Point Report a little later. Academic Affairs and Accreditation.
Yes, sir. Let me begin by bringing to the board's attention one official item of business that Academic Affairs considered and is recommending to the full board for approval, and that is a resolution that you'll find under Tab 2 in your packets, and it's been talked about a number of times this morning, but I would like to take the opportunity, since it is short, to go through it if I might. And it's the resolution approving the Bachelor of Science in Industrial Engineering Degree Program. Whereas Francis Marion University is charged with the mission of providing baccalaureate and graduate education for the state of South Carolina, and whereas at the present time, there is no baccalaureate engineering degree program offered in northeastern South Carolina, and whereas area businesses and industries that employ engineers have for many years urged FMU to offer an engineering program, and whereas the Bachelor of Science in Industrial Engineering Degree is fully consistent with Francis Marion's mission to serve the PD region and the state, and whereas the Industrial Engineering Program supports the statewide higher education plan's emphasis on workforce training and economic development, and whereas the Bachelor of Science in Industrial Engineering Degree Program has been approved by the FMU faculty and administration, be it therefore resolved that the Francis Marion University Board of Trustees approves the Bachelor of Science in Industrial Education Degree Program. And this was fully approved by the Academic Affairs Committee this morning and is recommended for approval.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Ms. Hartong to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. And I know I went through that rather quickly, Mr. President, but I would like to say that, whether you realize it or not, that's a fairly historic moment for Francis Marion, and I know that we've had a lot of conversation regarding this program and industrial engineering, but that's a big event for us, a big event for the university, and I think will bode well for us in the future, unless you want to say a couple of words.
With your indulgence, Ms. Chairman, I'll just make, in my report, I'll just make a couple of comments about where we are with the next steps on that.
Thank you. You'll continue.
Okay, a couple of other items, if I might. We heard from our faculty chair, who was recently re-elected, Dr. Flanagan, for that position, and she talked about some staffing changes. Dr. King was kind enough to summarize his report, which was quite a lengthy report, on enrollment, and if I might just hit the highlights just briefly, to report that attendance is going well, I mean, I'm sorry, recruitment is going well, and attendance at events is extremely high. We have been working with students and getting the Pell Grant process underway, and one thing interesting to report, and we've all heard a lot about sequestration in the last couple of days, especially today, it's a very important event tonight. The Pell Grant was not affected, at least in this year. We've all heard that it's across the board, 5.1 percent cut. It's not affected, in fact, it was increased by $95 for the fall semester, so that was good news. And the faculty is working with students and getting their class schedules underway, and we also heard highlights on some of the outstanding work the faculty and students are undertaking at the university, and it is truly outstanding to hear some of these activities that they're performing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion regarding her report? Hearing none, we'll move on to Development Alumni Affairs. Mr. Tracy Freeman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to say good to everyone. As you all may know by now, we, unfortunately, we lost our development manager, Mr. J. Dowd, who has set the position at another university in Charleston, so we had to go back into coffers and dig up our trusted friend, and someone that's been with us a long time, for the intimate position right now, Mrs. Elizabeth Cooper. And she gave a report this morning, which I know she's got a big shoes to fill, but I'm quite sure she's going to do a very, very successful job. As my report stands, the accounting firm, as from Deloach and Williamson, is currently conducting the annual audit as of yesterday for the foundation, and that report should be coming back pretty soon. Several events, the golf tournament and auction will be next Friday, March the 8th, at the Country Club of South Carolina. Also, on April the 12th, is scheduled for the athletic auction at the Performing Arts Center. The proceeds will donate for the Athletic Annual Scholarship Fund. For a nonprofit leadership institution, they're going to have a workshop day on May 10th here on campus, two groups combined with over 200-plus alumni for that group, and it's continued to grow on every year. Also, we received two gifts in the past, since the last board meeting. The foundation office is working on a proposal for a gift industrial engineering program to come on those heels of our resolution just approved. San T. Cooper has made a commitment of $150,000 so far, and so hopefully, a lot of other industries will follow that thereafter. A recent gift of property in downtown Florence, which is near the PACT Center, will be used in hands to musical industrial program. Alumni Affairs Report, November, they had FMU Alumni Reception Concert for the new, which is a new event, very well attended by these 300 alumni and friends that attended. It was a jazz concert that was given downtown. Of course, also in December, the Alumni Association, they're doing a adopted highway program, and they have done it at least three times per semester, where students pick up trash along the road, so they do it on Saturday mornings from 8:00 to 11:30, so if you see them out there, blow to horn, but don't run them over. And February has been a very, very busy month for the Alumni Association Office. First started out with the week of, had a full events for Homecoming Week, started off on the 12th with the School of Education, having various awards, and just won a very, one new award they handed out this year was the Education Leader Award, and it was awarded to Amy McCallister Skinner, which is also was Teacher of the Year State of South Carolina. Just want to highlight that. School of Business, which was on that Friday, had an annual event at the Performing Arts Center, approximately 90 people that was in attendance there, and Mr. Gentleman, by the name of Mr. James Scott Rowe, MBA of 2002, is the CEO of Health South up in Chattanooga, Tennessee, which was also, he started right here in Florence, South Carolina, so wanted to definitely highlight that. Then, of course, with the highlight, the, we had a homecoming reception and concert that was given down at the PACT Center, led on that evening by a group called the Blue Dogs, and if you all missed it, you all missed the treat. It really, really was great. About approximately 109 people attended that meeting, that festivity. Some other highlighting things, of course, last night, we had an annual alumni awards reception, and let me tell you, it was definitely done up graciously. I have a brochure here that highlighted all the recipients, and we have one of the recipients that our very own Attorney General, Alan Wilson, he was class of '96, was the Outstanding Alumni's Award winner. And so he was also an attorney, Jake, excuse me, Attorney Chad Burgess. He received a Professional Industrial Achievement Award in public service in law. Professional Industrial Achievement Award went to Dr. Rainey Harris Knight. She's the superintendent of schools in Dalton County. And then also the Benjamin Inge Award went to Jessica Rushmore Mason of 2002 and also 2006. And on May 11th, we're going to have a tailgating Alumni Association tailgate party at the Raceway, weekend of International Dalton, and it is also being helped arrange these arrangements by our own alumni and Dalton Raceway Vice President and General Manager, Mr. Terry Mack Josie. So there are tickets being sold to that event, so see Mr. Julian Young for, if you want, get some to those events. That concludes my report.
Now, if you go to the tailgating party, you get to go to the race, too, is that part of the package?
I think you have to buy a ticket to the race, and then you get a ticket.
Athletics laws.
Oh, okay. Good report. Any questions, discussion, anything you'd like to mention?
Just a mention of the date for the auction, the athletic auction is the 24th of April.
Yes, the 24th, ma'am.
Thank you. And now we move on to Financial Affairs and Facilities. Mr. George McIntyre.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our committee met and reviewed the Quarterly Budget Summary Report that you'll find in Tab 3 in your notebooks. We have received approximately 95.5 percent of our income in our general funds at this point in time in the fiscal year. We have expended approximately 58 percent of our income in the general fund, and we have passed about 60 percent of the year, so we're right on target on our expenditures. So from income and expenditures, we're in good shape, and thanks to Vice President Kispert and his staff, and the faculty and staff, and all here that contributed to making that a very solid situation here for us. The head count remains stable in the report and in the financial assistance area. One thing that we touched on was the Pell Grants, as Trustee Hartong mentioned earlier, how important the Pell Grants are to our students here. And if you'll note in this report that it's projected in this year that we'll receive about $10 million in Pell Grants. It's a very important part of our financial structure here, and I mentioned it in passing in that the importance of it, and also that if you ever run into one of your congressional members, please, please express that importance, and a big thank you to them for how much that program means to all universities, but particularly a university like Francis Marion. So if you do have an opportunity to run into a congressman or one of your senators, please tell them how much it means to us. Next, after, were there any questions about the Budget Summary Report? Next week, we'll just mention in passing, Dr. Carter's going to discuss this a little more in more detail in his report, but we have made a request to the, of course, to the state for our annual budget request for 2013 and 14 in the engineering program, and also in our health science building facility, so he's going to go into more detail on that in just a minute, but we did talk about that in our committee. In the facilities update, the Office Service Building, Office Services Building that is under construction is moving along nicely. We anticipate it being completed in April and being able to move in that the second week of May, so that will be a very welcome addition to our campus here at Francis Marion. Everything's moving along fine there. And we have made a proposal to the Florence County Transportation Committee, and I think it's now been referred to DOT for the construction of a median just outside our main entrance to the campus, between the campus entrance and the athletic facility entrance, and we think that'll be a great asset, both from beauty and also for safety for the campus as we continue to develop that area. And that concludes our report, Mr. Chairman, unless anyone has a question for me.
May I just make one quick remark here, and I know he doesn't like when I do this, but I still feel compelled to do it occasionally. That initiative was dead until Senator Leatherman found a way to revive it with the County Flats Committee, so we're deeply appreciative. And by the way, the importance of that, of that, of that, redeveloping that roadway there isn't simply for beautification. The real need to do it is for health and safety reasons, particularly the safety of our students crossing between here and there. Senator, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Good report, Mr. McIntyre. Moving on, Student Affairs and Athletics, Mr. Eddie Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Carter, members of the board. Our committee met this morning and had reports from three different areas. Student Affairs, Dean Ramy reported that leadership Francis Marion concluded in November with 21 students recognizing this program, and will be starting the program again in this fall. We had a ROTC commissioning ceremony for Thomas Gettings on December 14th, a day prior to graduation. The annual Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration was held this year on campus with the guest speaker being Senator Darrell Jackson from Richland. The, and I understand it was well-attended with the reception following in the Lee Nursing Building. Francis Marion Dance Marathon raised over $4,500 this year. The proceeds from that will be delivered to the McLeod Children's Hospital in the near future. University Programming Board, the University Student Health and Engagement Fair will be, was took place in January recently, and the Career Connections Program is going well, being operated through the Career Development Office. Couple of upcoming events down the road, Miss FMU Program is March the 7th in Chapman Auditorium. The Spring Fest, which I asked Dean Ramy to explain what that was, she said it was pure fun, so we're all about that. The Career Fair, of course, is an annual event, takes place this year in April in the University Commons. Student Life Awards are coming up, and then another ROTC commissioning ceremony will be taking place prior graduation for Tyrone Atkins. We also had a visit from Cody Simpson, the SGA president, who will be completing his second term as SGA president here at Francis Marion, and has, and told us that he will continue to be a student here for another semester this fall, so we're not going to be losing him entirely, but that he is wrapping up his two-year term as a very active and aggressive member of Student Government Association as president. Done a wonderful job. What Cody reported, that the 2013 Patriot Pride Homecoming Parade had 32 different organizations represented, a huge success, and on the public service side, they've reached out to the Connie Maxwell Children's Home here in Florence for doing some volunteer work and engaging with the, some of the children there, and planning a cookout later on and recreational activities. Soon they'll be having the Town Hall Student Forum on March the 5th, and a number of staff members here on the campus will be there to answer student questions about student life and other activities here on campus, such as the Campus IT, Campus Police, Dining, Residents' Life, Financial Assistance, Student Affairs, Career Development, and the Bookstore. So this is a chance for students to interact with some of the university leadership about maybe some of the questions or concerns they may have. The Student Legislature in April, which Cody is the governor of, will be attending the Spring Session in Myrtle Beach, and Libby Sims, the current SGA secretary, is the new chairwoman, so they've done some really great things in the student elections, Student Legislature arena. Spring elections are coming up pretty soon, and getting a new slate of officers, and we, of course, wish Cody well in his, in his future endeavors. And lastly, certainly not least, the Murray Harstler reported on a lot of activities in the athletic arena. And here's the one thing that I think often gets overlooked in athletics that Murray reported on, and I'm certain proud to hear this, is that the Fall GPA for Francis Marion athletes was a 3.0, for the first time ever, and that's, that is in comparison to a 2.42 campus-wide. So you've got a very talented group of student athletes here at Francis Marion. Eighty-five of those had GPAs in excess of 3.0. The women's soccer team earned the academic award for the eighth time in the last nine years. Ian Wallace was named NCAA Division Two All Academic Team for 2012, and during the past school year, nine FMU student athletes garnered Peach Belt Conference All Academic Honors for their respective sports, and that's quite an accomplishment. We have $220,000 as a goal for fundraising for the Swamp Thoughts Club, of which $168,678 has been collected. And recently, longtime athletic director, baseball coach Jerry Griffin, was inducted into the Francis Marion University Hall of Fame. Currently, the men's tennis team is ranked number 27, and the women's tennis team is ranked number 10. And I think that's about it. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Any questions, discussion?
And don't forget the athletic auction, as Ms. Richardson mentioned, that's a big, that's a big part of the fundraising for the athletic department.
Moving on to the President's Report, Dr. Carter.
Mr. Gunn, I would simply say, if you're obligated to miss the auction, if you'd just send your money anyway, that would be fine.
Telephone bills.
That's right. The important thing is that we get the money. Of course, we'd love to have you as well, but given a choice between the two, will you know how that story ends? Let me begin with just a couple of general comments. Trustee Hartong mentioned early on that Becky was re-elected, Becky Flanagan is Chair of the faculty. It's been absolute delight working with Becky this first year. She's done a marvelous job as Chair of the faculty, and we really look forward, not only to this year, but many years to come. Becky, thank you for everything you do for the university. And of course, this is, as Trustee Gunn mentioned, this is Cody Simpson's last meeting as the SGA Director. You know, in 13 years, I've worked with a lot of student government presidents, and I have to tell you, I don't know that I've seen any with more enthusiasm or more commitment to what he does than Cody. Cody, you've done a terrific job. Everything you do in your life is going to be terrific, young man. We're very, very proud of you. You represent the very best part of this university, our students. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this has been, this is Francis Marion Week, and Wednesday was Francis Marion Day, and this has been a very, very, very busy week for the university. On Tuesday, the Provost and I, with representatives of the USC Medical School, had the opportunity to brief about 60 or 70 physicians in town about the possibility, not only of training third and fourth-year medical students in Florence with our two hospitals, but also with how they might be put in cohorts with our nurse practitioner students, nurse educator students, and hopefully physician assistant students in the, in the coming years. We also had the opportunity to talk to those physicians about the potential Health Sciences Building that we might be able to raise in, in the next few years, with a little help from our friends, and that was Tuesday. Then, of course, on Wednesday, in partnership with the Morning News, we had a terrific Marion Medallion presentation, and the Timberlakes and Ralph Porter were the recipients of the awards this, this year. I think I've told the Executive Committee earlier this morning, there really wasn't a dry eye in that lobby at that presentation. I mean, you're dealing with three people essentially whose entire life has been devoted to service to others, and it was certainly our pleasure to join with the Morning News in presenting that awards this year, as we will, as we will every year. And then, of course, last night, as you know, Tracy, the Alumni Awards were just extraordinary. They were, they were tastefully done, it was well-done, that, you know, I've got to tell you, you could, you could have a yodeling contest on the stage of that Performing Arts Center, and it would look elegant, okay? The truth of the matter, though, last night just came off flawlessly, and again, I want to thank Julian Young for all the work and effort he put into that. That was a terrific, terrific facility, a terrific event. Then, of course, right after this meeting today, we recognize our founding president. We will unveil that, that statue of Doug Smith in the back of Stokes Hall, and I want to, I want to accelerate my comments because I want to make sure everybody has time to get over there. I believe that some of the faculty will join us for that, and the Smith family will join us for that. I'm ever mindful of that old adage, "The more enduring the tribute, the briefer the interlude should be." We expect that statue to last hundreds of years, so the prelude will be very short today, okay? Let me talk very briefly, if I might, about appropriations. Trustee McIntyre raised the issue, and we're right now, we're finished with the House Ways and Means Committee process, and next week, I believe, the House will begin debate on the bill. And right now, as it sits, Francis Marion, we have our $400,000 appropriated in recurring money for the engineering program, and we were able to get a line in the House budget for the Health Sciences Building. There's only $200,000 on the line, but we're ever hopeful that after the House debates finished and it crosses over to the Senate, that we might be able to improve on that appropriation a little bit. Let me not pause here, I don't want this to be an awkward moment. The, but, but we're optimistic that we'll be able to have some success in that process this year. On the engineering, let me say this, we are, we are moving along very, very well. We have a terrific curriculum design. Today's action on the part of the board will mean that we'll take that initiative now for final approval to the C.H.E., which we think will occur during early summer, we're hopeful in any event. We had on campus this past week, a candidate that we interviewed for the Engineering Coordinator's Position. We all were very, very impressed with that individual, and, Ms. Provost, we have extended an offer, and I think within the next few days, we'll hear back on that offer, but if we can, if we can get this individual, I think it will portend well for the future of the program. Let me mention one other thing, if we might, with regard to supporters of the university. When we built the athletic complex, there is a loop road that completely surrounds the athletic complex on the back. When we built the complex, we knew that we wanted to hold that road, and ultimately, we wanted to name that road for one of our more ardent fans. And as a result of discussions between Student Affairs and the, and the Athletic Department, we met this morning with the Executive Committee, we have, we have told the Executive Committee we would like to name that road, and we offered up the name of Harlan Hawkins to ask the Executive Committee to ratify that, that decision. They did that this morning, so we will name the Loop Road within the next couple of months formally for Harlan Hawkins. Many of you, virtually everybody who's attended this university knows Harlan. For years and years, he was a professor of mathematics here. Harlan is, I don't know that Harlan's missed more than a dozen athletic contests in the, in the decades that he's been here. You'll find, you'll go to a soccer game where it's raining and it's 42 degrees, and you'll find Harlan wrapped up in a parka, hunched over, watching every single play. Nobody at this university supports athletics more than Harlan Hawkins, so it's a wonderful tribute that I think we can bring to him. Now, Ms. Chairman, with your, with your support here, we'd like to distribute to the board members, we, you may have started to see a new logo appear with regard to our advancing the visibility of our athletic teams and of the university. We moved essentially to a new logo that essentially shows the F and M intertwined. We think it's very tastefully done, our graphics folks worked on it, it's, it's clean, it's concise, and it's very collegiate. It will be the new logo for Francis Marion going forward. We have for each of you, and because the hats are sized, there are names on the bags. We have, for each of you, and because the hats are sized, there are names on the bags. In my opinion, you all have the same-sized heads, but, in any event, if you, before you leave today, will pick up your bag, we have a blue cap, we have a khaki cap, and then we have for the back of your vehicle, one of these things. And I promise you, at the summer meeting, at the late spring meeting, that we'll have some garments for you, too, with the same logo. Finally, Mr. Chairman, if you would permit, we have discussed with the leadership of the board, there is one change to the, to the, to the June meeting. Previously, we had scheduled the June meeting on the twenty-eighth, which is the last working day of the fiscal year. With the indulgence of the board, we would like to move that, that last meeting up one day. We would like for the board to come in that afternoon of the twenty-seventh. The Executive Committee would meet at two. The committee meetings would go from three to five-thirty. The board meeting would go from five-thirty to six-thirty that afternoon. And then the board, we would invite the board to, to join us up in the boxes at the Red Wolves game, beginning at seven, seven-thirty that night. So instead of having our Thursday night, Friday morning board meeting for just this one meeting, we would like for you to come in on Thursday afternoon. We'll have our board committee meetings, the board meeting, and then we'll essentially have a social that evening. For those of you who need to get back afterward, you can. For those who can stay over, we would welcome that. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, that constitutes my report this morning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nobody really has a conflict with that date, do they? That pretty much stays in keeping with what we had anyway, a Thursday evening meeting. I can assure you, there'll be a lot of fun at the ballgame afterwards.
Yes, sir.
No alcohol involved. Will that be casual dress?
Yes, sir. Yeah. I would, I would hope, Ms. Denton, that the, the meeting for the board meeting that day, since it'll be late June, I hope we can all dress casually and then just retire to the ballgame afterwards.
Thank you. That's a good idea. Any questions for the President before we move on? Now we move to unfinished business. One, yes?
And then, Carter kind of covered this, and he's, he's, this morning, he's taking affairs, and he did in financial affairs, but the industrial engineering degree, what impact do you think that's going to have on, on the university long-term?
Mr. Lee, I think that's going to have a tremendous impact on the university, as, as have the nursing program on the university. You know, we have a very, very fine liberal arts institution here, and we built on the core of that liberal arts institution. Now, as we start to add degrees that clearly have greater applicability directly to the workforce. And I think nursing has certainly had that impact, both with the baccalaureate program in nursing, and now with the nurse practitioner, nurse educator program. And by the way, just for those of you who watch and track such things, you know, better than eighty percent of the nurses we graduate are staying in the PD region of South Carolina. That's why we wanted to invest in this program. That's why Senator Leatherman helped us move that appropriation, do that program forward. I think we'll find the same thing with the nurse practitioner program. And ultimately, Mr. Lee, you give us four or five years with the industrial engineering program, and I think you'll see a similar level of tracking. Now, that's from the standpoint of parents and students. The employers are the ones that are most enthusiastic, that for the first time in the history of this region, we're going to home-grown many of our own engineers. And, and here's the beauty of the program. There'll be two tracks for coming into that program. One will be kids that we admit as freshmen, will spend their freshman and sophomore year here in pre-engineering programs. The other track will be those kids who go across the, the county to Florence-Darlington Tech, get associate degrees in engineering technology, then take a package of preparatory courses in physics and higher-order mathematics, and then come in from the technical college engineering technology route. And many of those men and women may have had three or four or five years in the workforce before they come into the engineering program. So two tracks here for engineering. One will be pre-service, the other will be in-service from people who work at Otis and Honda and other places that now have their opportunity to come and actually get their baccalaureate degree in engineering. That's a wonderful opportunity for the men and women of this region.
What size do we anticipate that class, first class?
I think we're looking, I think we're hoping that that first class will come in around thirty to forty students. I do see, over time, that program expanding to better than a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five students. But that's one program we really want to build very incrementally, because we want to make sure that we have the equipment and we have the expertise to train some of the best engineers in the state. And I think that's what will happen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Moving to unfinished business, we do have a report today from Mr. Jackson, the nominating committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Trustee McIntyre and Trustee Emery, who also serve on the nominating committee. As all of you know, with the new seventh congressional district, we've had a reconfiguration of our board seats. And as a result of that, we're likely to have several new board members who are going to be coming on this summer. And, and going through the, the officer nominating process, we started discussing that, and taking that into consideration, we are going to present an amendment to the bylaws. One of the other things that came to light was the, the fact that, because of the dates that our officers are elected, is during the time that we have trustee elections. So the potential for overlap there could create a problem as far as officers being nominated and being elected to the board at the same time. So what we have before you is an amendment to the bylaws. And if you'll permit me, I'd like to go through it with you. The, Mr. Chairman, the nominating committee moves the following amendment to the university bylaws, to amend Section Four by striking "spring" and inserting "fall" in the following sentence, which is, "Election of Officers shall be held at the quarterly 'strike spring' and insert 'fall' meeting biannually. And further amend Section Four by striking "summer annual" and inserting "quarterly winter" in the following sentence. New officers will assume office at the strike "summer annual" and insert "quarterly winter" meeting. And what this will do is effectively move the, our cycle that we currently have from the summer odd-numbered years to the winter even-numbered years. And the present slate of officers would continue to serve until our winter meeting in February or March of next year. And what this amendment requires is notification, which you're being notified now, for thirty days in advance of voting, which would be at our next meeting, and then passage by two-thirds of those present at the meeting. So, Mr. Chairman, that's our recommendation and our proposed amendment.
You making that as a motion for?
Yes, it's a motion from the nominating committee.
I see. Couple, motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
No, no, sir. It has to settle.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
For the next minute, yeah, okay.
That's right.
Thirty days.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I don't know this, can, can we vote on it in the next thirty days? I mean, conference call?
By conference, by other conference call or by written ballot?
May I respond to that?
What is, sir?
You're not permitted through written ballots. You could come on conference call. The FOIA is pretty clear with regard to telephonic conversations if it's a formally-scheduled board meeting. But of course, the beauty of this is that, that waiting the full three months won't, I don't think it will, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Jackson, I don't think waiting the full three months will affect this at all, and will simply give board members sufficient time to consider.
That's right. And, and what brought, came to light out of all this is, regardless of the, the new congressional district and the changes and the new members coming on, it makes a lot of sense to have the elections at that time of the year so that it doesn't conflict with our election cycle as trustees. And that's, it just brought that out, I guess, is what happened.
There was one other point that Mr. Jackson and I discussed when he approached me about it. It also means that a new slate of officers will not immediately have to implement a brand-new budget, but they'll have the opportunity to come in midway through a year, learn more about the budget and where that process is. They'll have six full months before we put the next budget. That, that's a good training process. It really is, I think.
It also gives new trustees a little time to get into their seats, learn a little bit about the university and the makeup of the board before they have to vote on elections of officers.
Or before they respond to the chair with regard to what new committees they would want to be assigned to. Now you're asking new trustees to do that before they even know much about the workings of the board.
Hearing that, we'll move on to new business. I don't think there's any new business, and I don't think there's a need for an executive Any further discussion, questions, anything? Hearing that, I move that we adjourned. I have a second.
Second.
I clear the meeting adjourned. Thank you.